Yes, sir. For those who are in agreement, let's power our heads. Dear Lord, thank you for this day of Father God. Lord, I ask that you, you know, just guide us and help us through this day of Father Lord. Lord, I ask that you just give the board the wisdom and the knowledge needed to make the best decisions for our students, faculty, and staff, Lord. Lord, I also ask that you be with those, Lord, from San Angelo, Curville, and the surrounding areas, you know, the calamity that just recently happened. Lord, I ask that you just, you know, provide the peace and comfort needed and send people, you know, to shine their light in this darkness, oh Father God. Lord, I ask that you just, you know, provide a path for them, oh Father God, to be able to move on, oh Lord. Lord, I ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Six o'clock now, call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is to consider an act on consent agenda for the minutes of the May 15th meeting. Financial statement as of May 31st, quarterly investment report. I hear a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead and approve the minutes of May 15th, financial statement, May 31st, and also the quarterly investment report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to act on the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passed. Next item on our agenda is to recognize our guests. We'd like to welcome Landra Fowler, Derek Sandoval, Aubrey Haynes, Cruz Mata, Joey Almond, Wade Carpenter, Randashel, Lisa Ermas, Connie Buchanan, Carlos Lopez, David Mercado, Mark Underwood, April Ruman, Vanessa Villarreal, Chuck Garabedian, Michael Bailey, and Julia Strata. Have I missed anybody? Welcome.
Dr. Watkins, before we move on, as you're aware, I don't know if the whole board is aware, but Ms. Nida Reid is retiring at the end of August.
Who?
Nida.
Oh, yeah.
Ms. Vanessa Villarreal, sitting back there, real quiet, waiting. She has taken Nida's spot, and she's training with her throughout this whole month of July to get ready.
Welcome.
When you hear her on the phone, I-
You've got a big job. Big shoes to fill. Welcome, and we wish you all the luck. Do you have an audience, the patrons?
No, sir.
No patrons. A report from the College National Finals rodeo.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Joey Almond, you're on the stage.
I want to thank y'all for letting me come tonight. This is quite a deal. We went to the College National Finals rodeo in June, qualified seven kids, which is a huge number, a huge number, and they are just unbelievable kids. And the week that we had there, it's something you dream about, you live about, and we worked hard for it, but those kids won three national championships. And you work your whole life trying to win one, and we won three in one week. We had the champion tie-down roper, the champion barrel racer, and then probably the biggest one to me was the women's overall national champion women's team of college rodeo. Just unbelievable what they did. The plaque that I have here tonight, I'm going to give it to y'all, to Dr. Gonzalez. This is what the women won, this is the women's team for the national championship, and maybe y'all can put it in here, or put it in the mission's office, or Dr. Gonzalez's office, but whatever, but this is quite an honor, this is huge. I'm going to give that to you. My wife couldn't be here with us tonight, but she's amazing. It takes the entire, it takes an army to do what we do, and she has put together a video tonight that, is it time, can we watch that?
Sure.
She's put together a video tonight, and it's a little long, it's 10 minutes long, and I told her, I said, "We probably need to shorten it." But when she showed it to me, and I got to looking at it, I said, "You know what? They deserve 10 minutes." So I want y'all to watch it, and it's a recap all week, and it's hard for me to watch it without tearing up. I watched it the other night at the house. But they are unbelievable kids, and they did an unbelievable job, and our school was well represented, well represented. And we had Dr. Gonzalez and Derek there. Man, and it was amazing for them there, the support, the parents of those kids. There's a cinch, I don't know if y'all are familiar with cinch clothing, but cinch is a national sponsor, college rodeo, and they have a semi truck, and it's the big semi trailer, and it's the cinch truck. It goes all over the United States. And when you pull up to the college finals, last year's champions are on that cinch truck, and I mean, it's a huge picture of them, and it tells where they're from. That truck will go all over the United States, and we're going to have two of them on that truck all year long, the barrel racer and the calf roper. So it was quite a, quite a, quite an honor, it's quite a deal, it was something, I can't tell you how proud we are of them. But I'm going to let y'all watch this video.
Before we start the video, just, you know, the rodeo is different than other sports, so we're actually competing against universities as well as community colleges. And so the equivalent of, you know, winning the national champion is winning the national college world series, winning the national football championship. That's what we were able to do as a community college from Uvalde, Texas.
That short round started, that championship round on Saturday night, the women were tied. They were tied with Gillette College out of Gillette, Wyoming, and that's a big rodeo school. And they were tied with them, and right behind us was, you know, they're the biggest powerhouse in the whole world, and that's Tarleton State, and the girls from Tarleton were second. And then a tough team out of southeastern Oklahoma State University, and they thrive their own graduate students. So they're going to have girls that are in their fifth year, and that's what they do every year. They recruit, they'll lose that team, and they'll bring in another set of, and anyway, we were able to win that deal. And this young lady that y'all are going to see, this A.C. Pinkston, she's unbelievable. But A.C. was our last barrel racer left to win the deal, and I had it figured in my head, and I knew what she had to do, she had to win it for us to beat, to pass Tarleton State and win this. And I didn't tell her, I didn't want her to tell her, because I didn't want to put that pressure on her, but I just went and told her, I said, "Win first," because we had to win first. But I didn't tell her why we needed to win first, but I told her to win first. And she won, she won first. And that passed them for us to be the national team champion, and I mean, that's just, I don't know, it's the biggest thing you can win on college rodeo level. So anyway, we're very proud. When y'all get through, I'd be glad to ask if y'all have any questions or whatever. We can talk a little bit more about it, but I'd like for y'all to watch this, because it's pretty, it's pretty good to me. This is when we were there, this is when they get their back numbers, this is the opening of the ceremony. I'm not celebrating. They do a lot of media stuff there, these kids are exposed, and it just opens the door for them and other things, but... I thought these boys right here could win the national championship. Slade's already won two of them for us, but they had a tough luck on their first one, but they're just unbelievable cowboys, these two boys are. There's a true freshman right there, he was in high school this time last year. That's Slade Wood went in the second go-round, this is them getting their go-round buckles. A lot of times they do that kind of stuff, my wife will do it with them, and she was writing what she had to do that night on her hand. He was trying to throw that pigeon string to you that night up there in the deal. When he come through the gate, he said, "Where's he sitting at?" For sure. He was pumped up. That's A.C.'s mama. That's A.C.'s mama there.
We'll rotate it, when we have a board meeting, we'll bring it over here, otherwise we'll put it into the president's office and brag about it.
But anyway, thank you all for having us.
Thank you.
Oops.
Great job, great job.
That's really something to brag about, and we appreciate so much the honor you've done us by representing us so well and so thoroughly. And we're so proud of all these kids getting a degree in something, or getting an education. That's so important.
Those who took up there, or all of that, that gotten degrees here, we're losing all, well, we're losing nearly all of them. I think we get two of them back. We're getting Tyler Calhoun back, he's a straight freshman, but the other ones are going on. Slade and A.C., you're going to Weatherford College to get your bachelor, the four-year degree. And Alyssa's going to Sam Houston State University. Carly Martinez, y'all, I'm going to put a little pressure on y'all. She's a 4.0 girl, she don't make anything but straight A's. And she chose not to go to school anymore, she's got an associate's degree, she's got a full-time job, and she told me, she said, "I'm not going rodeo for another coach, I'm going to wait to come to the four-year degree here." So she's coming in two years back. They're great kids. We lost 18 of them this year, and there was 25 degrees and certificates that they got at graduation. So they're, they're good kids.
That's a real accomplishment, we are so very proud of them.
But anyway, they did, that was a special week.
Well, thank you so much. We appreciate the presentation, this show was excellent.
One other quick thing, let me go on to tech stuff, then, and then I'll be, my wife is a huge, huge part of this deal, and she, it helps me on the recruiting, and it helps me on, it's just amazing what she does to get us out there and get us exposed. Her social media that she runs, she runs all the rodeo on. She sent me this while ago, she couldn't be here tonight, and she said, "I don't know if you, but..." Our social media for our Southwest Texas rodeo, the last 30 days, our Facebook has had 1.7 million views. Our Facebook reels has had 6.1 million views and 74,000 interactions. She's got a personal TikTok that she runs her, just the rodeo on. The rodeo has 348,000 views and 4,000 profiled. She just started an Instagram, and it's got 80,000, 83,000 views, that's in the last 30 days. So our school is out there, we're getting exposed, and then yesterday, I got an email from, which you never know, it might not pass, but I got an email from a young girl that's at the National High School Rodeo Finals, she's from Canada, and she's checking into our school.
International.
There's a lot of exposure, we put it on the national, it's on a national level.
Thank you, thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you for having us recognized all over the country. We appreciate it so very much. So where's Sugar now?
Well, she's, she's on her way home, she had an appointment that she's had three weeks ago in Marita, and she couldn't make it, but anyway, she's on, I think she's getting some of that-
Well, tell her we miss her.
-her missing that, she wasn't calling. She worries about me a little bit.
We appreciate your being here and sharing this, all this glory with us. Next on our agenda, we have a president's report.
Well, it's hard to follow that.
Hard to follow that.
So tech expansion, we don't have a lot of movement yet. Both contractors are working with the permit office with Del Rio and Eagle Pass, so they're still trying to acquire permits. We're trying to tentatively schedule a groundbreaking, or sometime mid-August. We'll let the board know once we firm that up, but probably within the next week or so, they should have the permitting done and begin, you know, to mobilize to start the construction, both in Eagle Pass and Del Rio. As far as the bond projects, we have the pavement contractors begun to work, they started on the Eagle Pass campus, so they're working, working through that, then they'll move over to Uvalde. And we're talking about scheduling on Del Rio, whether to go ahead and get it done or wait till, you know, after the construction, so we don't have all those heavy trucks running over new pavement. But we're, we're working with a contractor on that. As far as the leases, we have a signed lease with the city of Uvalde for 10 years with acceptable language on the non-aeronautical use clause. And we also have the board to consider, and we'll discuss and close the foundation lease. And that's, the foundation is between us and the Southwest Texas College Foundation, and then the Sol Ross lease as well. The legislative session, kind of wrap up after the session ended. We passed the budget at our May board meeting before the session ended. Here's just a recap of what we, we put some estimates based on what we knew at the time. They, they did fund us an additional $5 million for tech expansion, so that brings the total to $10 million that the state has invested in Southwest Texas College to expand our tech program. So that's, that's a huge win for us, it's going to give us a lot of flexibility with the bond money to do some things that, you know, we had hoped we could do with, to expand our workforce training, short-term training with building a multi-use facility at the Crystal City site, so we can do not, not just one kind of training, but multiple kinds of trainings at that center. And incidentally, the new budget reconciliation bill that passed at the federal level increased or expanded PEL to be available for workforce training. So if a course is between eight weeks and 15, 16 weeks, anything under than 16 weeks is not eligible for PEL right now. So the new guidelines expand PEL availability for those short, like our lineman course.
Lineman course.
That'd be an excellent candidate for the expanded PEL, and that comes in Fall '26, so that's a huge win. It also will open up additional opportunities for like the Crystal City campus with that short-term training. So we're really excited about that. We're also, you know, with the additional money, it gives us the ability to, you know, kind of accelerate our additional programs. I know we had talked about, the next one in the queue was physical therapy, so we're going to start doing some research on doing a physical therapy program, perhaps incorporating it into the allied health lab that we talked about for our nursing program. Before we design it, we want to make sure that if, if we need to include more space to accommodate that, possibly also better utilizing the facilities we have in the gym, maybe those can be worked into this program. So that's kind of on our radar now, and we're working on that as well. I won't talk about the rodeo team, you heard a great report and a video on the rodeo team. That's kind of the essence of kind of where we're at, at least from, you know, 30,000-foot view.
Dr. Gonzalez. The workforce building that you're planning on in Crystal City, would that be in the lot next door to that empty lot that we have?
An empty lot, yes. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have a, consider an act on a Revive Cafe renewal in Eagle Pass?
Yes, sir. This is the snack bar area and for the Eagle Pass campus. There's really no change that we're recommending, other than the current contract has them paying us on a monthly basis, and we're moving it to a quarter. They file their sales tax reports quarterly, and we're asking them to, to give us a copy of their sales tax to verify their sales because their commission to us is based on sales. So in order to tie them both together, we're gonna ask them to pay us quarterly, submit their sales tax. That way, everything can jive. Right now, the contract reads monthly, but the same rate. It's 17% of gross sales.
How do we come up with a 17% magic number?
So that was, we bid it out last year. And we had, I want to say, we had two vendors that submitted a proposal, and they submitted that rate. We'll provide that service to your students and provide you a 17% commission for doing it. And the other one, I forget what it was, but, you know, they stayed at that position. And then we awarded the contract here at the board.
And then we're satisfied? Did that?
Yeah, you know, it would, it would cost us more for us to operate it on our own. You know, just the personnel and the food costs. And, you know, for the 17%, it provides that service to a student, provides a little bit of revenue for us as well. So, yeah. And we're looking to do something similar on the Del Rio campus. Sol Ross has released some of that space on the Del Rio campus back to us. We're gonna be able to move some stuff around and free up an area to have a cafe on the Del Rio.
We don't have anything at this point in Del Rio.
We don't. We haven't had anything since COVID, probably. A snack bar. It's not gonna be to the scale of this, but it'll provide, you know, some food options for our Del Rio students.
And we'll do the same thing, pretty much, ask for bids from local vendors or something to set up there.
Right. We'll do that. So we recommend that the board approve the renewal of the lease agreement with Revive Cafe for one year at the current rate of 17% of gross sales per month payable in a quarterly basis.
Do I hear a motion?
I still move.
Motion's been made. Do we need a second?
Oh, second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the Revive Cafe renewal offer. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Next item on our agenda is to consider an act on a faculty handbook.
Ms. April, do you want to tackle that one?
Sure. Thank you. In your packet, you should have a Word document that has the page numbers and updates just summarized throughout the faculty handbook. Then also, if you want to see a hard copy of the handbook with the changes, Dr. Gonzalez has a really thick one. So on behalf of the faculty and the administration, we'd like to present to you the updates and changes for the faculty handbook. I can go through each one, but generally speaking, the items that were updated were, was the name changed. So throughout, you would see Southwest Texas Junior College changed to Southwest Texas College, SWTJC changed to SWTX. The new domain caused changes to the links that were posted in the handbook. So those have been updated. And then, of course, we used to use a common language called unit action planning, and now we use strategic plan initiatives. So that has been updated throughout the book. After that, it's more specific updates. We updated the organizational chart, and then just a few roles and responsibilities throughout the handbook. And again, if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer.
And I have the full handbook if somebody wants to look at it. You want to say? Oh, no.
Where does this stay so we could?
This is, the updated one is gonna be on our webpage. But if you want to see the changes, we can certainly make copies for.
And those were added to the board book.
Oh, they're also on your board book in the computer.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, sir, please.
To accept the changes in the faculty handbook?
I move.
Got a motion. Should we need a second? Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion been made and seconded to accept the changes in the faculty handbook. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Consider an act on insurance, RFP.
Yes, sir. Lisa, you want to tackle this one?
We received two proposals when we put the RFP out. We had one from Gallagher and one from our current carrier, which is USI. After reviewing the, and comparing the coverage and the pricing, we're recommending the board continue with USI. The comparable, as you can see in your paper, indicated Gallagher's proposal came in at $300,000 more for comparable coverage. Also, in their wording, they indicated that this was conceptual pricing. So we got a feeling that maybe that conceptual pricing would mean they could go up. So that's a little of a question mark there. We also have no history with them. We have history with USI. We have a good track record with them. They've been very responsive to any questions that we've had, as well as any claims. They also have better coverage on the workman's comp and the auto. The premiums are lower, and that's where we have had some claims this past year. So we're recommending to continue our relationship with USI. And you can see.
How long have we had the USI?
It's been three years. We're in our third year.
And what does a contribution mean on their proposal? What does that?
That's our cost.
A premium.
What it costs.
Our premium. And actually, they did a really good job. They came in better. We're gonna save probably about at least $200,000 over last year's premium. USI is a broker. So they basically go out and shop the best coverage for us.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, sir. We recommend that the board accept the RFP that USI provided us.
I still move.
Motion been made. Do we need a second?
I second it.
Motion been made and seconded to accept the insurance RFP. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passed. Now we need to consider personnel matters. The board will convene and close session in accordance with the Old Meetings Act, Texas Government Codes 551.072 and 551.074. Consider employment-related matters, T X Foundation leases, and Sol Ross lease. We'll see y'all after a while.
It's 6:39.
Hang around for supper.
I know. We didn't say, but it is.
The numbers don't lie.
No.
All the important things.
We need to reconvene in open session again to consider an act on TXC Foundation leases.
Yes, sir. Administration recommends that board approve Southwest Texas College, Southwest Texas College Foundation leases for both Eagle Pass and Doria.
Very second. Motion been made and seconded to approve the two leases, Southwest Texas Foundation and all in favor say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion passed. Next we need to consider an act on Sol Ross lease.
Yes, sir. I would ask that the board authorize the president to proceed with the Sol Ross lease as advised in closed session.
Aye, so move.
Second. Motion been made and seconded to accept the proposed lease with Sol Ross. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next on our agenda is to adjourn. Anybody want to make a motion?
Aye, so move. We adjourn.
I hear a second.
I'll second.
Motion been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor? Motion carried. Now we need to call a meeting to order for the foundation. Our guests are the same guests that were recognized in the open meeting. Need to consider an act on a consent agenda for the minutes of September 12th to 24 foundation meeting and scholarship update. All in favor of considering passing, accepting the consent agenda? Need a motion?
Aye, move.
Second?
Second.
I have been made and seconded to accept the consent agenda. All in favor? Aye? Anybody opposed? Additional agenda on the list is to consider an act on leases to Southwest Texas College.
Yes, sir. We recommend that the foundation approve the leases with Southwest Texas College.
I need a motion? Need a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the leases to Southwest Texas College. All in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Next on our agenda is to adjourn. I need a motion?
So move.
Need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carried. We are adjourned.